Good evening, everyone. Notice of this meeting stating the date, place, and time has been disseminated as required under the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975. Copies of the agenda are also posted on the city's website and Lindon TV for the public. This meeting is now called to order. Mr. Clerk, can you please conduct a prayer and flag salient?
God of the universe, look thou with favor upon these here assembled and bestow thy guidance upon the members of the governing body in their deliberations. This we ask in thy name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In the event of an emergency, the proper method of exiting the council chambers is through the three doors in the rear of the room. Occupants should proceed down the staircase, out the front door, and move away from the area of the front steps. Any member of the public wishing to speak during the public comment session at the end of the meeting, please sign in on the white sheets provided at the front of the room with your name and address. Please turn off all cell phones or place them on vibrate. If you must take a call, please leave the council chambers to do so. Mr. Clerk, can you please conduct a call to roll?
Mrs. Ormond.
Here.
Javick.
Present.
Caldwell.
President.
Mohammed.
Present.
Rivas.
Present.
Delgado.
Present.
Strano.
Here.
Armstead.
Excused.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Houdak.
Here.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Here. Okay, could we have approval of the public session minutes of January 7th and January 21st, 2025, please?
I move for approval of the minutes of January 7th, 2025, and January 21st, 2025, and request a second.
Second. Mrs. Ormond.
Yes.
Javick.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
abstained on the first, yes on the second.
Strano.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Houdak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to ordinances on hearing, beginning with ordinance 69-1.
An ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter 7 Traffic of an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance Adopting and Enacting the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Linden, 1999, passed November 23rd, 1999, and approved November 24th, 1999, and is amended and supplemented, be it ordained by the Council of the City of Linden. Section 1 of Chapter 7 Traffic shall be in the same as hereby amended as follows: Chapter 7 Traffic, 7-33 Handicap Parking Regulations, 7-33.1A Handicap Parking on Street, Add 631 East Henry Street, One Spot, 2139 Dill Avenue, One Spot, 2512 Summit Terrace, One Spot.
Okay, has the ordinance been properly published and posted?
Yes, ma'am.
Has any written communication been received?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing that, can we have a motion, please?
Council President, I make the motion to close the hearing on ordinance 69-1. Approve it and ask for a second, please.
Second. Mrs. Ormond.
Yes.
Javick.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Houdak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Okay, ordinance 69-2, please.
An ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter 36 Flood Damage Prevention of an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance Adopting and Enacting the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Linden, 1999, passed November 23rd, 1999, and approved November 24th, 1999, and is amended and supplemented, be it ordained by the Council of the City of Linden. Section 1, Chapter 26 Flood Damage Prevention shall be in the same as hereby amended as follows: Chapter 26 Flood Damage Prevention, Article 1 Flood Pain Management Regulations, Section 102.2 Establishment of Flood Hazard Area, be repealed and replaced, Section 26-102.2.A Table 102.2.1.
Okay, has the ordinance been properly published and posted?
Yes, ma'am.
Has any written communication been received?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing that, can we have a motion, please?
Thanks, Council President. I'd like to move the hearing be closed for ordinance number 69-2, the ordinance adopted, and I request a second.
Second. Mrs. Ormond.
Yes.
Javick.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Houdak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Okay, we'll move on now to percentage agenda items. All items listed with asterisks are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted with one motion. Okay, we have items number 1 through 5, please. Can we have a motion?
Yes, Council President, I move for approval of consent items 1 through 5 and request a second.
Second.
Mrs. Ormond.
Yes.
Javick.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Houdak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Okay, we'll now move on to reports from the governing body, starting with Councilwoman Ormond, First Ward.
Okay, thank you, Council President. I'm going to start off with my budget and finance review report. Approval is requested for the following finance items. The payment of bills totaling $1,749,494. Bills have been signed by the mayor, council president, and finance chairwoman in a detailed check register, and vouchers are on file in the clerk's office. We are in receipt of investments made by the city treasurer for the month of January at the rate of 4.12%. I move for approval and ask for a second, please.
Second. Mrs. Ormond.
Yes.
Javick.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Houdak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Okay, the City of Linden, Division of Transportation and Properties. I hereby submit the monthly financial report from the Division of Transportation and Parking for the month of January 2025. This report includes the collection of on and off-street parking meters, railroad parking lots, railroad parking permits, and merchant parking permits. Trenton Site Collections, $1,365. New York Site Collection, $1,084. Railroad Credit Card Transactions, $25,379.64. Railroad Permits, zero. Railroad Mobile Payment, $2320 Parking, $11,832. Online Railroad Permits, $4,770. Parking Meter Collections, $6,879.55. And Merchant Permits, $6,000, for the grand total of $57,328.19 submitted by Tyrone Gibbons, the traffic maintenance supervisor. I would also like to just let everyone know that we are having our annual Black History Celebration. The mayor of Linden, the city council, Department of Parks and Recreation, along with the Linden Heritage Cultural and Heritage Committee will be hosting us at our Black History Celebration, 5:30 PM to 8:30 PM, at the Linden Multipurpose Center, 1025 John Street in Linden. It's one of the few events that I give all of my heart and soul to because it's always a wonderful opportunity for everyone to experience the African-American culture. We're going to have food, dancing, fun, theatrical performances, vendors, lots of activities for the kids, and door prizes. Once again, come out and not only get a taste of Black history, but come out and get a taste of our history, because our history is Black history. I'd also like to mention that we are getting ready to also have our annual Women's Tea for Women's History Month, which is going to be held on Sunday, March 23rd. Every year, the Linden Culture and Heritage Committee honors three to four outstanding women in our community and in our county who have made a significant impact on the lives of people in Linden and just overall our surrounding community. So we just invite you to come out on March 23rd to this awesome event. I will keep you posted. If you would like to reach out to me at 908-370-6482, I can let you know how much the tickets are going to be and the procedure, making sure that you're available. Last but not least, I would just like to take the opportunity to thank the residents in the First Ward for taking such good care of their property during this first snowstorm. We had some areas that had a few bumps and bruises in terms of the overall street plowing. You know what, and that's to be expected, everything's not perfect, but I do want to thank the members of my community for making sure that the sidewalks were shoveled. It is the law, it is our ordinance, to make sure that several hours after the last snowfalls, we shovel to make sure that the sidewalks are safe for passage. And I drove around and it was just an amazing job. One or two weren't done, but you know what, that's okay, they were senior citizens and one of them was a widow. So on that note, if you do know that your neighbor is there by herself or himself and he's a senior, reach out and help him, because that's what our community is about. You know, we need to stick together and help one another out. That ends my report, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Javick?
Thank you, Council President. As chairman of the Fire Committee, the Fire Prevention Bureau collected the following monies during the month of January 2025, a total of $8,806.28. Regarding our Linden Fire Department ambulance billing, the amount of $103,338.89 for the month of January 2025 have been added to the total deposits for 2025 totaling $103,338.89. At this time, I would like to move for approval to install a streetlight at the corner of Jackson Avenue and Rose L. Street, phone number 631-83LD, and I request a second.
Second.
Mrs. Ormond.
Yes.
Javick.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Houdak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes.
Regarding our construction code, this department has issued 250 permits and processed 32 certificates and has issued 107 summonses for the month of January 2025. Monthly revenue is as follows: Building CCO permits and additional permit fees, $72,217. Zoning, $1,850. Court settlements for the month, $8,900. The reflective total being $82,967. Regarding our Board of Health update, measles cases continue to be identified across the country. All cases are unvaccinated or have unknown vaccination status. The Board of Health recommends following all medical professional advice on vaccination schedules for both children and adults. There's been a slight increase in COVID-19 and a steep increase in influenza type A. As always, the Board of Health continues to urge everyone to observe standard precautions, especially washing hands frequently and thoroughly throughout the day with soap and hot water, but especially before any activities that bring your hands to your eyes, nose, or mouth. Also, note agricultural animals are prohibited in Linden. In light of the increasing number of cases, especially with avian influenza or bird flu in poultry, please be advised that Board of Health ordinances prohibit the keeping of any agricultural animals in the city for any reason. Anyone who is aware of any agricultural animals being kept within the city is encouraged to call the Board of Health at 908-474-8409. Good evening, everybody. One West on the corner of Wood and West Elizabeth Avenue in the Second Ward is moving ahead rapidly. They are hopeful for completion in the beginning of 2026. There also exists a possibility that we could someday get a multi-level parking deck between this building and the Citizen Building in conjunction with New Jersey Transit. This would help relieve some of our uptown parking congestion. We are also anxious to implement a mobile pay system for our parking meters on Wood Avenue to relieve some of the frustration for people not having any loose change on hand. Working in conjunction with Sid, our Special Improvement District, we have rolled out new signage on Wood Avenue to help improve the quality of life in the district, especially with many avenue restaurants having an interest in the warmer months to set up tables outside. The signs state, "Breathe Easy, 100% Smoke-Free," ordinance number 6844. We continue to address the speeding on our streets and the problems with trucks, especially on West Blanky Street corridor. I just want to thank everyone who has reached out to me. I appreciate the interest in your neighborhoods, and I can be reached at 908-494-4608, or email me at bjavick@lindennewjersey.gov, on Facebook, Second Ward Councilman Barry Javick. As always, information can be found on our City of Linden website. Council President, end of report.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Caldwell.
Thank you, Council President. Greetings, Third Ward neighbors. As the Chair of IT and Social Services, there's no updates, everything remains status quo. As far as the infrastructure and utility work, streetlights in key areas have been repaired to enhance visibility and safety, particularly in high-traffic zones. The only current activity is gas and water utility work. The gas work will be on East Blanky Street from Wood Avenue to Rose L. Street. Water work will be from East Henry Street to Wood Avenue to Rose L. Street. Additionally, the gas company is planning work along East Elizabeth Ave. from Wood Avenue to Rose L. Street in the coming months, which will be coordinated with Union County. Both utility companies will also conduct a final asphalt restoration work in the spring on several roadways in the Third Ward. The traffic light on Elizabeth Ave. and Wood Avenue, they're going to be working on reprogramming those traffic lights in the spring. Our next community meeting will be held on March 25th, 2025, at the Linden Public Library on the third floor, Columbia Room, 31 East Henry Street, Linden, New Jersey. We are in some unprecedented times, given the state of affairs in our country. If you are unaware of the Third Ward is represented by Sections 31 and 34, they're represented by Congresswoman LaMonica McGlyver. She can be reached at 202-225-3436. Sections 32 and 33, we're represented by Thomas Kane, Congressman Thomas Kane, at 202-225-5361. I encourage all residents to call your representatives and let them know your thoughts on the current issues. I will be calling both of them. I also want to wish everyone a happy Black History Month, even though Black History is every day of my life. Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, D E I. We must stay positive and recognize that D E I is not a curse, it is a gift to the world. Think of a pot of soup, the carrots, the celery, the chicken, and noodles, along with seasoning, gives it flavor. Similarly, we all come from different backgrounds and cultures, and that's what makes Linden a great city, a true melting pot of diversity. And the great words of Martin Luther King, "Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. The time is always right to do what is right." It is not possible to be in the favor of justice of some people and not be in favor of justice for all people. Your voice matters. Feedback is always welcome. Please reach out to me with any concerns or suggestions to help improve in our ward. I would also like to send condolences to my brother-in-law Pete Fish. He lost his mom, and may his mom, Ms. Audra Fish, rest in peace. Remember, Councilwoman Caldwell always follows up and follows through. I can be reached at mcallwell@linden-newjersey.gov, or by phone, 908-531-0676. Stay safe, positive, and healthy, and I look forward to seeing you all soon. That concludes my report, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Mohammed.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to first give a report for the ward, and I'd like to say the citizens of Fourth Ward get an outstanding in how they cleaned their sidewalks after the snow, and the Department of Public Works done an excellent job. I now like to turn our attention to some of the health concerns, and I would urge citizens, despite all the noise, to get vaccinated. I can tell you it's honest truth that the flu is no joke, influenza, and I also, I'm old enough, I won't tell you my age, they said men don't tell their age, but I'm very proud to have been on there, three scores and ten plus. I witnessed polio, I saw people with polio, I saw people die, I saw people in iron masks, and I want to congratulate the former Senate Majority Leader for him voting against the confirmation of a person that's anti-vaccination. I don't have any ill will against Mr. Kennedy, Secretary Kennedy, I actually worked for him at Technical Career Institute, so I know him, I just see him every day, speak to him, he was a pleasant fellow. But I just can't go for that, because sometimes good people have to speak out if they, if people make mistakes. None of us are perfect, not bringing politics in it, but I urge people to get vaccinated, stay vaccinated, take care of your health, as some of us know, COVID is no joke, measles is no joke, get vaccinated. And now I'd like to extend my deepest condolences to the person, a very honorable and noble woman that passed on to her Jesuit ward, Ms. Gail Lynch, an outstanding citizen of Fourth Ward. God bless her and her family. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Okay, Councilman Rivas?
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, citizens of Linden, neighbors of the Fifth Ward. I'd like to start my report saluting all the community on the celebration of the Black History Month. The diversity of the city is one of the greatest things that we have, and I salute all of you celebrating the Black History Month today. I'd like to continue to thank the hard work of all the city employees. You're the reason why the city of Linden keeps moving forward. Thank you for everything that you do. I'd like to remind my neighbors that please stay warm. We have been continuing to experience rigid and frigid temperatures out there, and hang in there. Spring is around the corner, or at least that's the way I see it. That's the way I see it. Let's look out for each other, ladies and gentlemen, be safe. Remember, we will never go wrong if we rule the right thing. Please, if you feel that I can provide you with any assistance, do not hesitate to reach out to me at crrivas@linden nj.com. Thank you, Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilman Delgado.
Thank you, Madam President. Hello, everyone, good evening. On behalf of, well, I just want to thank the entire Sixth Ward, because I started my tour of the streets of the ward, and I have to say that the residents are outstanding, inviting me in for coffee, saying, "Aren't you freezing?" Just lovely, lovely people. I've done Hampton Street, Smith Street, Emma Place, Lynn Court, Kennedy, and most of Web Simpson already, and I'll be out there trying to tour, knock on everyone's door, and hear feedback from everyone. In these past few weeks, it hasn't even been a month yet, I've worked with Councilwoman Ormond to get the two autistic signs that came as a request to my ward, and that's being done in place. The signs are being fabricated as we speak, so thank you, and thank you to our workers who are working on that right now. Thank you to DPW for cleaning that, it was like a pile of salt and sand that was at South Wood and East Monzo, thank you for cleaning that right up. My council Facebook page is up for the Sixth Ward, so any resident, please feel free to follow, it's Eloy Javier Delgado. If you search Eloy Javier Delgado, my middle name, that will come up with my council page. There's a community survey there, many residents have taken it already, please, I urge Sixth Ward residents, continue taking it, because a lot of the concerns and things that we're dealing with, it's coming from all of you, from your ideas, so I really appreciate that. Let's keep that going. Thank you, Mayor Armstead, thank you, Council President, and Joe Vollet, for helping me navigate and solve constituent issues as I get my feet wet, and also, and thank you to the directors that I've called once, twice, or three times. Sorry for blowing up your phone, especially with a snowstorm, I appreciate that. And just on a final note, it's more of a quality of life matter, we've been getting a lot of complaints of, listen, only a pet, whether it's a dog or a cat, it's a blessing, but we, at School Six, there's a lot of people that are not picking up after their animals, after their dogs, and we're getting complaints, and it's, our kids go to that school, they step in the feces, they go have reading time and whatnot, it's a problem. I spoke to the management of Meridia, they, today actually, they sent out a notice to the residents of Meridia to please be mindful and to pick up after their pets, or they could get fined, not only the municipal side, but also, Meridia assesses their own fines too. So that went out today, so, and that, and for the people who don't live in apartments or whatnot, just let's all be mindful to our neighborhood, let's keep it clean and sanitary. On a slightly more serious note, during the last snowstorm, there were some reports of people trying to get into cars and whatnot, so let's be extra cautious, make sure to lock all your cars, because unfortunately, we have some bad actors out there that try to take advantage, that during a snowstorm when people maybe are not paying attention, leave their stuff unlocked. So let's keep all doors locked, let's be safe, let's be proactive, let's keep our neighborhoods clean, and I'm very grateful to all of you, and I'm having a great time. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Strano.
Thank you, Council President. I have the personnel report. Number one, the Police Department approving on-call pay for Matthew Graff and Dennis Cabezas, computer service technicians, in the amount of $3,950, pro-rated, effective February 19th of 2025. B is approving the appointment of two public safety communicator trainees from the attached list. They're subject to the successful completion of all city pre-employment requirements at the annual salary of $42,000, and that's effective March 3rd of 2025. In the Municipal Court, A is approving the posting for the position of a violations clerk with a salary range of $39,451 to $90,597. Three is in the Board of Health, A is approving the transfer of Markell Parker to the Board of Health as a housing inspector full-time and no change in salary, and that became effective February, or will come to be effective February 19th of 2025. In the Construction Code, A is approving the appointment of Kayla Lot Clerk, Kayla Lot to Clerk One, full-time, at the salary of $37,298, subject to the successful completion of all the city's pre-employment requirements effective March 3rd of 2025. B is to approve the posting for two code enforcement officers, part-time, at the range of $20 to $33.99 an hour. C is approving the appointment of Tracy Wencoski as our construction code officer, full-time, at the annual salary of $145,000, subject to the successful completion of all city pre-employment requirements, and granting a residency waiver effective March 11th of 2025. Five is in the Fire Department, A is approving the separation of employment with Felipe Rufo, a firefighter recruit, following the unsuccessful completion of his working test period, and that's affected, was affected February 7th of 2025. Six, in the Recreation Division, A is approving a seasonal list that's on file in the clerk's office. Seven is the Department of Community Services. In the Division of Engineering, A is approving the reappointment of Bruno De La Quado, student intern at the rate of $16.13 per hour, not to exceed 20 hours a week, and that's effective February 3rd of 2025. And in the Division of Public Works, A is the voluntary resignation of Christopher I, truck driver in good standing, effective February 14th of 2025. B is approving the appointment of Gabby Damon, laborer tier two, full-time, at the annual rate of $19.32 per hour, subject to the successful completion of all city pre-employment requirements, effective February 25th of 2025. C is approving the appointment of Malcolm Johnson, laborer tier two, full-time, at the annual rate of $19.32 per hour, subject to the successful completion of all city pre-employment requirements, effective February 25th of 2025. D is approving the appointment of Malik Welch, laborer tier two, full-time, at the hourly rate of $19.32 per hour, subject to the successful completion of all city pre-employment requirements. E is approving the seasonal list that's on file in the city clerk's office. Eight, in the Personnel Department, A is approving the FMLA NJ FLA leaves that are on file in the Division of Personnel. And B is approving the appointment of Fred Castle, Linden historian, at the annual stipend of $3,000, effective March 1st of 2025. I move for approval and request a second.
Second.
Mrs. Ormond.
Yes.
Javick.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Budak?
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, this is, um, just to, um, a shout out and a little bit of information. In my, uh, previous employment, I worked for the Department of Public Works in, uh, the county, and, uh, I did a lot of those overnight, truck driving, plowing, and salting routes, and, and, uh, I just, you know, I, I have a great appreciation for what our Department of Public Works does. And some of these storms are unique. Some of them are like no-win situations, you're damned if you do, damned if you don't. You always got to keep in mind that our city resources are at, at stake here. Uh, we're, we went through a lot of salt this year. We, we have a resolution for more salt with the co-op with the county, and our salt dome will be refilled. But, um, some, sometimes you have these storms that, um, you're better off not doing anything, because on my particular street, they tried to plow it, and they made a mess. And I'm not blaming anybody. You have to try, uh, but I can see good reason for not continuing to make a mess throughout the rest of the city. Uh, I know a lot of people weren't happy with it, but it was one of those situations where, in a matter of a couple hours, most of that was melted away anyway. And, uh, again, the people that are talking about the residents that do cleaner walks, you know, that's, that's a, um, a wise thing to do, because you never know if, in fact, it's going to melt away or it's going to become a sheet of ice. Uh, and, um, we've been fortunate, these storms are small, um, they're annoying, uh, they're pesky, um, you know, the, you never know, again, like if, if you're going to get a freeze over, um, but, um, I just want to let the, uh, department heads, everybody that's involved, um, that, and the, uh, workers that, uh, do this work, that they're appreciated. And, um, we understand that some people will sometimes be a little bit, um, you know, ununderstanding of what the, you know, circumstances are, and we will deal with it, and come June and July, when it's 150 degrees out, we're not going to be thinking about the snow on our streets. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Okay, Councilman Rodriguez?
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, all. I have a short report today. Uh, I'm aware of, I'm aware of the inconvenience and stress the last sto- the last snowstorm caused. I understand it was a difficult situation, and I assure you that we are working, we are taking steps to prevent this from happening again. With dangerously cold weather approaching this week, please, please assure you stay warm and look out for one another. If you have any questions or assistance, feel free to contact me at 908-583-7482, or email me at arodrigues@linden-nj.gov. Your feedback is invaluable. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Huda?
Thank you. So I understand the frustrations of winter storms, but I just want to make my residents aware that your needs are being addressed. And recently, there have been, um, thefts and burglaries in our neighborhoods. So I'm just asking everyone to be mindful of your surroundings. If you're having a package delivered, have it delivered to another location. Amazon has several lock boxes throughout the city. Um, put your lights on in your house, uh, point your blinds towards the ceiling, uh, lock your car's doors, windows, check them, even though you might have thought you locked it, check it again. And, uh, you want to put your unwanted visitors at a tactical disadvantage, and our Linden Police are aware, and they are patrolling our areas. And speaking of the Linden Police Department, please keep our officers in your prayers. We recently had several that had been deployed, uh, to continue to protect our freedoms, and keep them in your thoughts and prayers, because as we all know, freedom is not free. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Um, I'd like to take this opportunity to send my condolences to the family of Gail Lynch on her recent passing. I'd like to also, during our personnel report, we had our, um, Linden historian named. This has been, uh, a long time overdue. We, with COVID going on, we, our historical society has been laying dormant, so we're excited to get this up and running. This is our 100th year anniversary for the City of Linden, for the incorporation, so, um, we'll have more information as it comes, but we're also asking anyone with any pictures, um, please contact. You could reach out to me, I'll get you in touch with our historian Fred Castle. Um, we're really excited about this, so please, feel free, we're not going to take your pictures. We'll make sure, if you could send them over, we'll, um, take very good care, so we appreciate that. Also, I want to mention our Councilman Armstead is not here this evening, he's not feeling well, but, uh, from the Recreation Committee, I wanted to make note, uh, summer camp registration is going to begin this Tuesday, uh, February 25th. If anybody has any questions, the number is 908-474-8600 for Recreation. And there's been also many questions regarding the permit parking in, uh, the eighth ward of Allen Street, Bachelor. If you have not received your permit, you'll need to get down to traffic to get that. Letters were sent out, I don't know if some people were missed, but you'll need a copy of your license and registration. If you have any questions, you could call the police number 474-8500. I used a prompt, I believe it's number three, for the Traffic Bureau, if you have any questions on the permit parking. And as always, anybody who needs any, uh, assistance, my number is 908-494-0880. Thank you. Mayor, do you have a report this evening?
Yes, thank you, Council President. First of all, um, my office received several calls regarding the development of a corner of, uh, Park Avenue on Route 109, uh, where the current Wawa is located. Uh, I'm pleased to announce that the develop- the developer has broken ground on a project that will, will include a Cordoba Mexican restaurant and a Popeye's Chicken. This development has been in the works for the last five years, uh, experiencing several delays, uh, due to the, to the State's Route 109 widening project. We're all excited that the construction has finally begun, and we anticipate the, uh, establishment to be open late spring or early summer. I know several of the council members have mentioned the snowstorm that we pre- that we just previously had. Uh, there were a lot of complaints in town. Uh, this may be attributed to, uh, the fact that every storm is different, uh, and that, um, we're currently rearranging the management down at DPW with regards to, uh, how storms are managed in the town. Uh, in any event, we learn from our mistakes. Um, and I'm certain that the DPW personnel there will do everything humanly possible to try and, uh, make our inclement weather, uh, experience much better. So, uh, we don't criticize, we offer what we call constructive direction. So it's very easy to complain and say someone's not doing something when times are tough, but all too often, we don't try to give constructive direction versus constructive criticism. So I want everybody to know that we are doing just that, constructive direction. I have a very important announcement I received from New Jersey American Water, um, regarding taste of the tap water. I'm sure many of you may have received some sort of, um, text over your phone or phone call, and it said, "Due to use of salt and brine for public safety during the recent winter weather and ongoing drought, some residents may notice a slightly salty taste in the tap water." New Jersey American Water confirms that despite this change in taste, the water remains compliant with all health-based primary drinking water standards. So if you taste a little salty water, uh, it's not going to kill you. At least we hope of it. Linden, uh, City of Linden is thrilled to, in honor to receive a Healthy Town Award. This recognition celebrates the progress we've made in prioritizing our residents' well-being through initiatives that promote healthy lifestyles. This achievement is a direct result of the partnerships and collaborations within our community, and we're deeply grateful for the support of our residents, establishments, and organizations who have worked alongside us to make this vision a reality. Together, we're building a healthier future for Linden. Now, our second ward councilman reported on this earlier, but, uh, to enhance parking convenience on Wood Avenue, the City of Linden is implementing a new payment system featuring mobile applications or a QR code. These initiatives will provide an alternative to the existing coin-operated meters at the train station, and will be implemented at no cost to the city. I've directed our counsel, Dan Antonelli, our, our city attorney, uh, to explore what it would take to create a request for qualifications, uh, to bring on a waste management consultant. This has a lot to do with the fact that we're building the largest anaerobic digester, uh, food waste to gasification project in the country. Uh, and there's a lot of things that we just don't know with regards to what the city's, um, uh, rewards will be. We know we're going to receive a tremendous tax boost, but, uh, we should be looking at, uh, a host community benefit, and I've directed him, uh, to create an RFQ so that we can bring on the necessary staff that will enable us to better understand, uh, waste processing, and what the city is entitled to. Want to talk a little bit about my council president, Michelle Yamakaitis, uh, who every year, last few years, has reminded us with, of, of Black History Month by giving us our African garb to wear. She gives it to all our council members. Uh, this is no surprise, uh, when, when I first took office, um, I, I, as many of you know, I didn't have the support of the local political organization, uh, but it was Michelle Yamakaitis who gave me the first olive branch. She reached out and she says, "Mayor, if you're here to make the city better, I'm with you." Uh, and I knew right then and there that Michelle, uh, was going to be a good team player, and look at this council. Look at this council. Uh, people will talk about diversity, equity, and inclusion, well, just look. This is diversity, equity, and inclusion at its best. We have black, we have white, we have Latino. Uh, and not just our council members, uh, our department heads and our supervision in this town, uh, it comes from every walk of life, and, uh, and I think it works well for this city. Uh, and we do every type of, um, uh, program possible to, to engage with our public. We have festivals for Latino, we have festivals for the African-Americans, we have festivals for Polish. Uh, we have something for everybody in this town. We, and we, we tell you that if you're interested in having a flag-raising event, just give us a call. We have a, we have a flag from every country in my office, and we will raise your flag and honor your, your, your customs and your traditions, uh, because that's what America's all about. We're a country of immigrants, and all this talk about DEI is not a good thing. Well, I, I beg to differ. Uh, it's a great thing. So, uh, and last, but certainly not least, uh, my condolences to, to the Lynch family. Uh, Isaiah and Tim Lynch, uh, who grew up here in the fourth ward. Gail Lynch, uh, was a, not only a good person, she was a personal friend of mine, uh, and I can only say, speak to our relationship. Uh, I met Gail over 31 years ago when I was out campaigning, I knocked on her door, uh, and her response was, "I hope you're not going to be like the rest of these BS politicians." Um, and, and I said, "No, I'm not." She said, "Well, I'm not going to let you be one." So right away, Gail joined our team, and if ever you could say that a council person had a chief of staff, uh, I'd be the first to say I had a chief of staff, uh, because after I won the election, Gail was right there, helped me write a newsletter, putting it out, helped me deliver it, uh, and, and she, she stayed with us for a very long time as a supporter. Uh, she saw chaos and confusion over at School Number Five on Election Day, so she became a board worker, and in no time at all, she became the master board worker there, and there was, uh, there was order at School Number Five on Election Day. Uh, and oddly enough, when she got sick and, and she could no longer work, the chaos ensued again. So, uh, her worth, uh, to, to me in this community is, is undescribable, uh, and I do thank her and her family for all their support, and mo- most of all, I'll say one thing, I'm certainly going to miss her and all, all the hard work she put in, uh, trying to, to make Linden a better place. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, we'll now move on to resolutions. Okay, uh, we begin with Resolutions 114 through 168. I would like to make a motion to move Resolutions 2025-114 through 2025-168, and ask, uh, could I have a second?
Mrs. Ormon?
Yes.
Javik?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Mohammed?
Yes.
Rivas?
Yes.
Delga- Delgado?
Yes.
Strano?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Budak?
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis?
Yes.
Okay, we have additional resol- two additional resolutions, which our clerk will read.
A resolution authorizing an amendment to contract the Government Strategies Group for General Management Consulting Services in conjunction with the 2025 budget-related matters. Whereas Government Strategies Group submitted a proposal dated February 2, 2024, for General Management Consulting Services, and whereas it is in the best interest of the City of Linden to utilize Government Strategies Group to assist the city in performing general management consulting services to ensure more consistent and effective management in the operation of various departments of the municipal government. And whereas the city wishes to conduct, to award a contract to Government Strategies Group in an amount not to exceed $10,000 to assist the city in connection with the 2025 budget-related matters by conducting oversight and review of the process, and the funds will be made available for this purpose and be charged to account number 5-01-20-131-113-255. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council, the City of Linden, that the city hereby authorizes Government Strategies Group, 1933 State Route 35, Suite 303, Wall, New Jersey, to assist the City of Linden in bringing economic value and effective management to the Treasury Department in connection with the 2025 budget in an amount not to exceed $10,000 as assigned by the governing body. And be it further resolved that this resolution is expressly contingent upon the negotiation of the necessary contract between Government Strategies Group and the City of Linden, be it therefore resolved by the mayor and the city clerk, are hereby empowered and directed to execute a contract with Government Strategies Group to execute a contract to effectuate the foregoing, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be published according to law.
Okay, can we have a motion, please?
Council President, I, I move, uh, that be Resolution 2025-169?
Mrs. Ormon?
Yes.
Javik?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Mohammed?
Yes.
Rivas?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Strano?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Budak?
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis?
Yes.
And other additional, uh, Resolution 2025-170?
Resolution creating an Affordable Housing Committee. Whereas on March 20, 2024, Governor Murphy signed into law an amendment to the Fair Housing Act, NJSA 52:27D-301, at sequence. Hereafter referred to as amended FHA. And whereas in order to comply with the amended FHA, the City Council wishes to create an Affordable Housing Committee, AHC. And whereas the City Council wishes to create the AHC and shall constitute of the following individuals: Mayor or his designee, City Attorney or his designee, LEDC Director Alex Lospinosa, Tax Assessor Nigel Thomas, Zoning Officer Thomas Gasler, City Planner, Affordable Housing Planner Paul Ricky, CFO Alexis Thack, Municipal Housing Liaison John Watkins, Construction Official Tracy Wenskowsky, City Engineer or his designee, Affordable Housing Counsel Jeffrey Summerman Esquire or his designee. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council, the City of Linden, County of Union as follows. All the named individuals are hereby appointed to the Affordable Housing Committee and serve at the pleasure of, of the City Council.
Okay, can we have a motion, please?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to our Resolution 2025-178. Respectfully ask for a second.
Second. Mrs. Ormon?
Yes.
Javik?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Mohammed?
Yes.
Rivas?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Strano?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Budak?
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis?
Okay, we'll now move on to ordinances on first reading. Okay, beginning with, um, Ordinance 69-3.
An ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter 3 Police Regulations of an ordinance entitled and ordinance adopting and enacting the revised general ordinances of the City of Linden 1999, passed November 23, 1999, and approved November 24, 1999, and as amended and supplement. Being ordained by the Council of the City of Linden, Section 1, Chapter 3, Section 3-2, Model Noise Ordinance shall be in the same as hereby amended as follows. Delete Section 3-2 in its entirety and add new Section 3-2.
Okay, can we have a motion for introduction of Ordinance 69-3, please?
Yes, Council President, I move for introduction of Ordinance Number 69-3, and request a
Ormon?
Yes.
Javik?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Mohammed?
Yes.
Okay, can we have a motion for introduction of Ordinance 69-3, please?
Yes, Council President, I move for introduction of Ordinance Number 69-3 and request a second.
Second.
Ormond.
Yes.
Javick.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Houdak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Order 69-4, please.
An ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter 7 Traffic of an ordinance entitled and ordinance adopting and enacting the revised general ordinances of the City of Linden 1999. Passed November 23, 1999, and approved November 24, 1999, and as amended and supplemented. Be it ordained by the Council of the City of Linden, Section 1, Chapter 7 Traffic shall be in the same as hereby amended as follows. 7-33 Handicap Parking Regulations, 7-33.1A Handicap Parking on Street. At 1400 Bauer Street, One Space, 1101B Hollywood Road, One Space, and 2805 Parkway Avenue, One Space.
Okay, can we have a motion for introduction of Ordinance 69-4, please?
Council President, I move we introduce Ordinance 69-4 and ask for a second, please.
Second.
Ormond.
Yes.
Javick.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Houdak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Order 69-5, please.
An ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter 7 Traffic of an ordinance entitled and ordinance adopting and enacting the revised general ordinances of the City of Linden 1999. Passed November 23, 1999, and approved November 24, 1999, and as amended and supplemented. Be it ordained by the Council of the City of Linden, Section 1, Chapter 7 Traffic, Section 7-35.7, entitled Regulations for Parking in Municipal Parking Lots Adjoining the Railroad Station, shall be amended as follows. This is increasing the fee in the train station parking lot to $7 per day.
Okay, can we have a motion for introduction of Ordinance 69-5, please?
Yes, Council President, I'd like to move Ordinance 69-5 for introduction and request a second.
Second.
Ormond.
Yes.
Javick.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Houdak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Order 69-6, please.
Bond Ordinance Providing an Appropriation of $401,500 for the Acquisition of a Sports Utility Vehicle and a Van for the Police Department for and by the City of Linden, and Authorizing the Issuance of $381,425 in Bonds or Notes of the City for Financing Part of the Appropriation.
Okay, can we have a motion for introduction of Ordinance 69-6, please?
Council President, I move we introduce Ordinance 69-6 and ask for a second, please.
Second.
Ormond.
Yes.
Javick.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Houdak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Order 69-7.
Bond Ordinance Providing an Appropriation of $310,200 for the Acquisition of Various Items of Capital Equipment and Vehicles for the Fire Department for and by the City of Linden, and Authorizing the Issuance of $294,690 in Bonds or Notes of the City for Financing Part of the Appropriation.
Can we have a motion for introduction, please?
Yes, Council President, I move for introduction of Ordinance Number 69-7 and request a second.
Second.
Ormond.
Yes.
Javick.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Houdak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Order 69-8.
Bond Ordinance Providing an Appropriation of $1,215,500 for the Various Capital Improvements and Acquisitions for the Division of Public Works for and by the City of Linden, and Authorizing the Issuance of $1,154,725 in Bonds or Notes of the City for Financing Part of the Appropriation.
Okay, can we have a motion for introduction of Ordinance 69-8, please?
Motion for introduction of Ordinance 69-8, request a second.
Second.
Ormond.
Yes.
Javick.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Houdak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Order 69-9, please.
Bond Ordinance Providing an Appropriation of $1,168,200 for the Acquisition of a Fire Engine and Other Related Equipment for the Fire Department for and by the City of Linden, and Authorizing the Issuance of $1,109,790 in Bonds or Notes of the City for Financing Part of the Appropriation.
Can we have a motion for introduction, please?
Yes, Council President, I move for introduction of Ordinance Number 69-9 and request a second.
Second.
Ormond.
Yes.
Javick.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Houdak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Order 69-10, please.
Bond Ordinance Providing an Appropriation of $880,000 for the Landfill Renovation of Down Shoots for and by the City of Linden in the County of Union, New Jersey, and Authorizing the Issuance of $836,000 in Bonds or Notes of the City for Financing Part of the Appropriation.
Can we have a motion for introduction, please?
Yes, Council President, I move we introduce Ordinance 69-10 and ask for a second, please.
Second.
Ormond.
Yes.
Javick.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Houdak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Order 69-11, please.
Bond Ordinance Authorizing Various Capital Improvements for the Division of Engineering in and for the City of Linden in the County of Union, New Jersey, appropriating $770,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $731,500 in Bonds or Notes to finance part of the cost thereof.
Can we have a motion for introduction, please?
Council President, I move we introduce Ordinance 69-11 and ask for a second, please.
Second.
Ormond.
Yes.
Javick.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Houdak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Order 69-12, please.
An ordinance amending Chapter 10-11.9, entitled Removal by Owner of or City. Be it ordained by the Council of the City of Linden, Section 1, that Chapter 10-11.9, entitled Removal by Owner or City, shall be deleted in its entirety and replaced as follows. This ordinance reduces the time for a property owner to comply with removing brush, weeds, or debris from their property.
Okay, can we have a motion for introduction, please?
Council President, I move for introduction of Ordinance Number 69-12 and request a second.
Second.
Ormond.
Yes.
Javick.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Houdak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Order 69-13, please.
An ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter 7 Traffic of an ordinance entitled and ordinance adopting and enacting the revised general ordinances of the City of Linden 1999. Passed November 23, 1999, and approved November 24, 1999, and as amended and supplemented. Be it ordained by the Council of the City of Linden, Section 1, that Chapter 7 Traffic, Section 7-35.5, shall be created, entitled Mobile Payment System, as follows. 7-35 Mobile Payment System. The parking fee for a mobile payment system shall be limited to two hours at a rate of $1.35 per hour.
Okay, can we have a motion for introduction of Order 69-13?
Yes, Council President, I move that Order 69-13 be introduced and request a second.
Second.
Ormond.
Yes.
Javick.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Houdak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Okay, we'll now move on to comments from members of the public in attendance on city business only. No personal, political, or derogatory comments, not to exceed three minutes. We'll begin with Mr. Halloran. Please state your name and address for the record.
Craig Halloran, 120 Donovan Place. Public safety meetings. I have never, you know, as far as I know, I've never been to one, but it was brought up to me by somebody that I met at somewhere in town. And why don't we have them? I know, I'm not allowed to ask questions, I apologize. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Morrison Midura.
Good evening, Madam President. Should I press something? That's my first time, so I'm sorry. Good evening, everybody.
Just stay here, David, and trust me.
My name is Batson Midura and I'm living in 2897 Price Street, in New York, and I work with my boss today. And I'm, like you, representing the customers. I'm working in the store. And we promised our customers that we're going to go to the meeting and ask because of the electronic cigarettes, which were forbidden in the town of Linden. We didn't know there was a meeting about that. We found out after that. And our customers are getting their products anywhere else, not ours. And we survive a lot of things, but our business is down in Linden right now. And a lot of friends, they go into the other places, like Pertham by Old Bridge, and buying the electrical cigarettes. And we're nowhere nearby any schools. We don't sell to any minors. And we, like the mayor said, the freedom of choice. We should propose the freedom of choice for, like, if you want to smoke the e-cigarettes. I personally don't smoke the e-cigarettes. It's choice for every customer we got. And there's plenty of them. They want to, they have their own reasons to do that, but we can't sell them right now because it's not allowed. So they go in the other places. And we just think it's not fair because we're working hard. And my boss is working hard for, to make a living for us, for employees, for everybody, paying taxes and all that stuff. And we just feel it's not fair and it's only Linden got this issue like that. And like I said, we promised our customers that we're going to go for the meeting, we're going to ask, we're going to do the appeal, ask how to do the appeal. Do we need to, like, take the numbers, names, and the phone? Because that was a really good selling thing, you know? I know it's not good for health, but it's like I said, people's choice. So because of that, we don't have, we can't sell the vapes, we have to raise the prices for the other staff. And we are located in a very good place. And there's new buildings going up next to us because we are on the Style Street and Elizabeth Abbott Avenue corner across the Abigail Restaurant, you know, building and everybody. So we got a lot of people and they're disappointed and they're asking and asking and we promised them that we're going to come in here, we're going to ask, and we're going to appeal. And if it's needed, we're going to get the names, the addresses, the phone numbers. We just want to, because like I said, we've never been here, me or my boss. So I said, like, we're going to go, we're going to ask how it goes. And if we can appeal, we can sign the names and then, and how many names we need, how many, like, signs, signatures we need. Because we just feel discriminated because of the Linden, you know? And that's about it. And we, thank you for listening and I hope we can figure it out somehow, how to do that. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ed Kaminsky.
Good evening, Ed Kaminsky, Maple Avenue. First, congratulations to Fred Castle. Have the pleasure of knowing him for a very, very long time and I could think of nobody, nobody, no one better suited for the position of a historian. One of the smartest guys I know, very thought out. So Linden's in a better place because of him and the work he does, for sure. So thank you for all the work you do. I guess as I think about the things that I was jotting down here and some of the comments, to me, always you guys heard me, I come up quite a bit. It's all about quality of life, right? And I heard some symptoms, right? I heard a lot of things here talking about the waste processing thing and, hey, maybe we should look into this and might be some health issues and other things. The parking garage, oh, maybe, you know, we could think about a parking garage when two huge developments are going up. The, you know, the issues with the snowstorm and the plow. So that's all endemic of just bad, horrible planning or non-planning. Now, I get it, the bar is very low for politicians, meaning to become one. You don't need a certain background. It is what it is. But just, folks, these are big decisions and this is horrific lack of, forget about vision and being a visionary, just basic planning. You're going to, you have another thousand, twelve hundred, you know, apartments on the road and now you're talking about parking? I mean, there's been people, and sometimes I go back and I'll watch the meetings, especially when I miss them, and the comments. These issues are same issues for years and years and years now. Now, at least there's some bit of honesty that they're being brought up by the politicians. So that gives me a little bit of hope that maybe they will be addressed properly, I maybe they will be addressed properly. I don't know. You know, this, we're a housing council. Sounds good, and it's one of these things where, hey, make it sound like we're doing something. It scares me. Because the more that politicians get their hands on stuff, the more they screw it up. You guys have the biggest driver in making things better and more affordable. Making good policy, cutting taxes, making things more efficient. You do that, you won't need all these things. This kind of stuff of councils, they add layers, regulations, they go the opposite direction. And that's why, unfortunately, listen, friendly bet with any one of you, with all of you, if you like, for a beer or whatever, you know, five years from now, ten years from now, we'll see where this goes. I'm that confident. And usually I don't get that bordering on cocky about that. But listen, I've seen this, you know, I've seen this game played before, and it's not going to be good. And unfortunately, it's a cruel, it's a cruel thing to do to many people who are living paycheck to paycheck, seniors, you know, who really have hope that they can get a better quality of life here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Hey, Virginia Malick?
And I'm glad you came before me and Mr. Halloran, right? Because you talked about quality of life and also safety, and that I'm going to be talking about that. The first way I want to do is preference or bring up that I'm a longtime resident of Linden. And I've seen various waves of people coming in. The community's been changing. And in the past, you know, past couple of years, the community has been changing, again, another wave. But what else I'm finding, and I'm really disheartened about this, is how people are showing more respect, oh, sorry, disrespect for rules, regulations, that, you know, they're coming, people are coming into a community that they should be accepting, accepting this. And I just want to bring up a couple of points, you know, garbage, trash, garbage cans, like how could a house have nine garbage cans? The original owner of that house happened to be a good friend of mine many, many years ago. It's a tiny house. How do you find all those garbage cans there? And what's, and what is the city kind of doing about it? How, why is it taking so long? You also have trash cans for paper. And why I'm bringing this up, we've had horrific winds over the past couple of days. We had a holiday on Monday. And in my, in the area that I live in, that was Paper Day. Well, people putting out their garbage the day before, it shouldn't have been out there. And I wind up about eleven thirty on Sunday, I was almost knocked over by the wind, having five pizza camp, pizza boards or plates and the paper on my front yard trying to pick this up. But there's other things. Parking, people are in difference about parking rules and regulations. You know, who's taking accountability of this? I go to people and I'm told by the traffic department, the person answering my call, saying, well, we'll send someone out and we'll see if it really warrants it. There's a sign there. And the person said to me, who's causing this, this problem, saying, well, I'll take into consideration about moving. But there's a lot of things that are going on in the city, and I'd just like to know, what is the accountability? The other thing is, there's housing. And a lot of houses are being bought, they're being rented. And I spoke to Ms. Orman last month about property managers. Well, to find out who's really the property manager for this house. Why, how do I find, or what do I do about the property not being managed? What recourse do I have? Also about houses not being used for the original purpose. I'll just take for instance, three-one-six Morningside. It's a house. It's registered as a house. But then I'm told it's also, you're allowed to go praying in these houses. Okay, well, what's being done about it? This is years it's been known about it. What are we doing about this? And then what I'm concerned about, since it's a house, they're paying tax, you know, what happens if that's converted to a house of worship? Maybe three seconds more? Whatever. A house of worship, you know, are we going to be losing a tax base on this? Is that's going to be allowed? Who do you really address this? And I know it's been battered back and forth.
Ms. Malick, your time is up.
Okay. It's just that I'm sadly disappointed about how the community, I'm finding now, showing more and more disrespect.
Thank you. Hey, Ms. McDonald, Heather?
Good evening, everyone.
Please.
My name is Vanessa McDonald-Hobbs. I'm at eleven nineteen Clark Street.
Go ahead.
And my issue, I hear people talking about sidewalk safety and everything. And I have a problem on Clark Street. I'm near St. George's Avenue. I have tried to speak to several people about the fact that there's construction happening. Now, this is a small picture that shows some type of gas or whatever pipe that's been exposed since last summer. This is not new, okay? I've tried to talk to my councilperson about it. I've called engineering, left my telephone number, and I'm not getting any help. So this is the sidewalk, where you can see that big, that's got to be like four or five inches. People that, I can't walk up the street around my block because of this thing. There are women that I'm noticing now pushing their babies in strollers. They have to get in the street in order to go around the block. Now, I've been living in Linden for thirty of the hundred years and pay taxes. And I'm, I just want to know, why do I have to live on a street like this where I can't walk around my block? Now, when I first moved in Linden in nineteen ninety-six, a woman tripped in front of my house because the sidewalk was cracked. And the councilperson, I forgot his name, but he had a bowtie, he knocked on my door and said, Ms. McDonald, we're going to fix this. The city is responsible for having your sidewalk fixed. That was then. Now, I've complained at least ten times. I've got text messages where someone said that they want to check it out. And nothing has happened. And it's February, almost March, and this was last summer. So the construction has been halted on the church that's supposed to be renovated, but that's not my issue. This pipe being exposed is dangerous. No one can walk around the block. And the reason I like living in Linden is because I can walk to my bank. I can walk to the supermarket. I can walk to the library. But I can't walk around my block. And I pay taxes. I'm a homeowner. So that's not right. What are you guys doing about that?
Well, huh?
So I did call engineering, no response. My councilperson is here, haven't gotten any help with that either. So I want to know, what's my recourse?
Nick, would you, our?
No, Orman is my person.
Mr. Pantina is our engineer?
Hi.
I have him talk to you.
I've all left messages.
You can come to my office tomorrow and we can speak.
I need to come to your office.
Well, you can, you can call me. But I'll be in meetings all day, but you can call me at a top time.
Do you have a car or something, so I can contact directly? And that's another thing. Calling City Hall, whoever answers the phone is rude, doesn't want to give her name, acts like she's doing us a favor. I'm paying taxes here.
We can talk afterwards.
Okay. Mr. Pantina will talk to you after the move in. Okay, Tim Demondi? Please state your name and address for the record.
Tim Demondi, two oh one West Price Street.
Go ahead, sir.
It's come to my attention that there is a city worker delivering DoorDash in a city vehicle on his, on the clock of the City of Linden. I would like to request an investigation into this. And the guy be fired. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. John Kazar?
John Kazar, twenty-three West Monts Avenue, still twenty, still twenty-three West Monts Avenue. All right, Robert Kennedy is not anti-vax. Don't spread false information, sir. He's against having kids shot up like eighty times before they're eighteen years old. Linden Bowling, fourteen and one, historic season. It's awesome. I went and checked them out at Jersey Lanes. I went to school with the coach, Jim Worth, and they have a great team, great bunch of kids. They play number one Bayonne tomorrow in the semifinals of the state tournament. I might go out there. It's in Jersey City. Shout out to the flag flipper. Man, you guys needed a white boy to tell you. You had the black American heritage flag flying outside City Hall for nine days upside down. That is embarrassing. So I've been watching the national scene. I'm really liking what I see going on right now. We have the DOGE, the Department of Government Efficiency, working overtime to get rid of the fraud, waste, and abuse within our government. Mrs. BA, you want to, you want to listen to this? Ms. Clark, I'm sorry, hi. I've been saying for years that we need you, we need a business manager to work on things. I don't, I'm going to watch you. I don't know if you're going to be doing things the Armstead way if you're really going to want to save us some money. I told, I said years ago, I stood here in twenty-eight nineteen, and I said, I know you're protected by a charter or some doctrine or something. Half this room would be wiped out. We don't, we don't need ten council people. I just saved us a hundred fifty thousand plus benefits right there. Five is all. Elizabeth has three times the population. They only have six council people. I, we could say in this room, we pay a city attorney a hundred thousand dollars a year to contract out hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. Tell me that makes sense. Back in the day, Cologie and them did all the work right in-house. Frank Dan, we had him for a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars a year to fix DPW. He goes and retires. I just been told, we're bringing him back now as a consultant to evaluate DPW? That makes no sense. I'd move right along to the mayor's favorite piggy bank, I don't know, the LRSA. This gentleman works there. He would not have a job. He does nothing there. The kid you transferred from here over to there that sits on his phone all day would not have a job either. The mayor's kids hired two months out of high school, fifty thousand dollars. They would not have a job. I digress.
Sorry, just, all right.
I digress. That's taxpayer money. I digress, though. Logic dictates that any father would want to help his child, of course, come on. But when the employees are there for ten, fifteen, twenty years that do real work there are told there's no money for raises, that's an issue. I'd move right on to the school system, of course. We have classes with zero teachers in it right now, but we're filled with administrative bloat, hundred and sixty, hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar jobs. And it's, it's just, it's just ridiculous. I'd move on to the board of ed. Of course, they say they're voluntary positions, but all of them have jobs within the city. So they're tethered to the Armstead administration. So it's all, you know, under the same umbrella. I guess that's it for today. I see my time running down. Thank you.
Hey, can we have a motion to close the public comment portion of the meeting? Second.
Orman?
Yes.
Javick?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Mohammed?
Yes.
Rivas?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Strano?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Huda?
Yes.
Mrs. Yama Kaidis?
Yes. Okay, comments from members of the governing body? Anyone which should speak? Councilman Javick? Go ahead, Councilman.
Council President, I just want to remind everybody to mark their calendars. We have a free rabies vaccination clinic on Saturday, May third, ten to two P M, Firehouse Number Two. That's three oh two West St. George Avenue. Thursday, May eighth, four to eight P M, Firehouse Number Three, twelve oh five East Elizabeth Avenue. And Monday, May twelfth, four to eight P M, Firehouse Number One, three oh two South Wood Avenue. For safety, all dogs must be leashed, and all cats must be in carriers. Thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Caldwell?
I just want to thank DPW for always working hard. They are, they go above and beyond. But I have two individuals that are rock stars, Shane Galette and also Shamil McLeod. I just want to thank them for all their hard work and everything that they do. All the city workers as well, all of you. Thank you for everything that you do.
Hey, Councilman Delgado?
I forgot to give my contact info during my report. My phone number is nine oh eight three seven seven six six two zero for all the residents of my ward. And my email is edelgado@linden-nj.gov. And then again, Facebook, Eloy Javier Delgado. You'll find my official page there with all the notices. And yeah, that's all. Thank you, everyone.
Hey, Councilman Mohammed? All right. Councilwoman Orman?
Yes, I just wanted to comment on something that really, I guess, bothered me a little bit. We talk about the change in our community. Communities evolve all the time. And it's our responsibility to try to live with one another. And by no means are we letting any single-family household become tax-exempt. It's just not what we're doing. But what really hurts is that back in the nineteen sixties, the same things that are being said now were the same things that were said about my father, when my father wanted to buy property in Linden in certain areas. So we just have to just sit back and just realize that change is going to come with every community all the time. And we, as a community, have to learn how to live and embrace one another. Because like I said, it was the same exact thing that was said to my father when he wanted to buy a house up in the tenth ward. No, it wasn't, it wasn't going to happen. So please, you know, like I said, let's just try to learn to live with one another. That's it.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Can I maybe say something?
Mayor? Go ahead.
Well, my first response is for Mr. Kaminsky. I just want to let you know that parking was not an afterthought. We've been, when this, from beginning, its inception, the development on Wood Avenue, we've been dealing with New Jersey Transit in an effort to try to build a garage. It is part of the overall project. So it's not an afterthought, as you would like many to believe. And you mentioned something about cutting taxes. Well, Mr. Kaminsky, we did do that consecutively. Yes, we cut taxes in this town. If you go back and look at your rate, your tax bills, you will see that the city's portion, the portion that we're responsible for, we lowered them seven times consecutively. Go back and get your bill. I'll sit down with you and go over it, if you like, if you like. Maybe you don't understand your bills, okay? As for food waste, and us hiring a consultant now to look at it, well, guess what, Mr. Kaminsky? We brought the company in. We're going to give four million dollars a year in ratables, tax ratables, okay? So guess what? Now it's my job to figure out how I can squeeze more out of it, okay? The building has, it hasn't been constructed yet. But guess what we're going to do? We're going to find out, whatever they bring in, we're going to get a host community benefit for it now. And that may entail us taking over a road to guarantee that anything that comes through it, we get paid for it. That's right. That's what we do. We sit up here, we think about how we're going to bring more revenues to the city. It's very easy to get up here to that microphone and say things, okay? Okay. Mr. DoorDash, it has come to your attention that somebody's doing DoorDash. You know what? If somebody's doing something illegal, you get on the phone and you call, say, guess what, Mayor? One of your guys is doing X, Y, Z. Guess how I found out? I found out because somebody said, look at his Facebook post. And guess what I did the next day? Took immediate action. So if it comes to your attention, pick up the phone. Hey, I'm just a phone call away. Superman ain't got nothing on me, baby. Okay?
Took immediate action.
Took immediate action. The next day, gone. Zip, zip, gone. Finito. Well, it's due process, but he's not working here anymore.
It's a person.
I can't take person, I can't discuss personnel, but I can say this. I took immediate action, okay? Okay. As for our flag being upside down, here's my words to that. None of us are infallible. Somebody made a mistake and hung the flag upside down. Guess what? The first time you saw it, you should have said, hey, flag's upside down. Don't talk about it. Be about it. Say, hey, we'd have changed it right away. There's nothing wrong making a mistake. People make mistakes, Mr. Kazar. Well, guess what? I'm sorry, Mr. Kazar. We raised the flag incorrectly. Okay, good. Good for you, Mr. Kazar. Okay? And as for my children, I'm doing what a lot of fathers didn't do. And obviously, you're a prime example.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, the next council meetings will be as follows. Council conference meeting Monday, March seventeenth at eight P M in the council conference room, City Hall. Council conference meeting prior to the council meeting Tuesday, March eighteenth at six P M in the council conference room, City Hall. Council meeting Tuesday, March eighteenth at seven P M in the council chambers. These meetings will be held in person. Can we have a motion to adjourn, please? Second.
Orman?
Yes.
Javick?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.